Be given an opportunity to speak during the public open session, but not at other times. The meeting is being filmed and by being present attendees are deemed to have agreed to be filmed and to the use of those images and sound recordings. I can advise that attendees should not disclose any personal information of individuals as this would infringe the data protection rights of that individual. May I please ask everyone to mute their microphones when not speaking? So item one on the agenda, apologies for absence. And we have councillor Mark Knight has sent his apologies. Are there any other apologies? Does anybody is aware of? No.
Councillor Barrett also contacted me and I believe and said he was actually going to contact Clark and yourself, but that again may have not come through, so.
No. Okay, councillor Barrett also then. Okay, thank you, councillor Foster. Right declarations of interest to receive statutory declarations of interest for members in relation to disclosable pecuniary interests and non pecuniary interests. Does anybody have any interests to disclose? Councillor Skilton?
I'd like to declare a non pecuniary interest for item nine B allotment letting's policy and terms and conditions as I am a plot holder.
All right, thank you. You're not counting. See if you're disclosing a non pecuniary interest as a non plot holder, right? Right. Right, chairman's announcements. I don't think I have any announcements really. Item four, public open session. For a period of up to fifteen minutes to allow members of the public to put questions or to address the council. Does any member of the public wish to put questions or address the council?
Yes, please. Am I, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Okay, first of all, thank you very much for listening to our views regarding the proposed allotment terms and conditions. Bigglesway Delotment Association, which I'll call B A A, have worked closely with Bigglesway Town Council, B T C, over many matters throughout the past year, and we appreciate the suggestions and amendments you have made in this document. Thank you. Whilst B A and members are happy on the whole, there is one particular area that we feel needs some attention. This is the flat rate increase that has been set for September twenty twenty five and the way that this has been conducted. Firstly, at the B A A B T C meeting in March twenty twenty four, it was minuted that B A A, and I quote, asked about a percentage increase and discrepancies between half and full plots. Officers confirmed that the price increase has been approved September twenty twenty four and that changes to this have to go through council. B A A Chair asked that future increases should be inclusive percentages between half and full plots, which was met positively by officers, end of quote. Unfortunately, this has not been the case. Secondly, it is slightly disappointing, to say the least, that another rental increase has been discussed upon and agreed upon by B T C without any information being sent to plot holders, especially when the proposed Ts and Cs were given out in October twenty twenty four, showing the current plot prices. When as for the updated terms and conditions for this particular meeting, it showed that there was a plot increase, which was added in December twenty four. A little more transparency would be very much appreciated and an explanation as to why the rent increase is going ahead would go a very long way, not just to us as committee, but also for our members and for all allotment holders. To make this clear, the current rate of inflation currently stands at approximately two and a half percent and a flat rate increase of five pounds means that a half plot has increased by eleven point two five percent, whilst a full plot has been increased by nine percent. This is based on the total number of plots that we have available. This means that one thousand one hundred and seventy five pounds per year has been given as an increase. If an increase of three percent was carried out, this would generate an extra three hundred and thirty one pounds. And if an increase of five percent was carried out, this would generate five hundred and thirty one pounds. A percentage seems to be the way forward, not the flat rate. Bigglesway Delotment Association do hope that the allotment improvement plan, when it is written for twenty twenty five straight twenty twenty six, reflects where the increase will be spent and how this is and hope that this is adhered to. Unlike some of the points that were raised in the twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four plan, a clear succinct plan needs to be written and followed. We hope that we continue to work together, but as already mentioned, transparency and openness is needed. We do have one quite poignant comment from one of our members regarding this matter. And I think it will just highlight where quite a lot of the plot holders feel. I struggle to cover the cost of my plots. I still lose most of my crops to rodents. The plots next to me on both sides have overgrown to the point where one has so much pulled my fence down. Unfortunately, the damage is done. I've reported this more than once. The other fills my plot with dandelion seedlings blowing all over, tall dandelions that have filled their neglected plots. There's people on the waiting list, but those with plots are allowed to let them go to ruin and take up the neighbour's plots with them. I'm seriously considering not bothering to renew. Yes, it is only five pounds, but some of us, I feel we just aren't getting the service that we pay for. I feel for those who have the flooded plots. Maybe B T C will investigate and fix it. I do hope so. And as I said at the beginning, we are very grateful for everything that you have done and for Harry and his team because they have worked extremely hard. But I think the percentage needs to be given careful consideration. Thank you very much.
Well, thank you for those comments. Does anybody else have any comments to make at all? I mean, just to mention that the fee increase was decided by the Finance and General Purposes Committee and approved by the council rather than PLOS. It's sort of, although it's within the term, the agreement that Public Land and Home Spaces is responsible for, the figures are determined by other committees, but I hope we will all take the point now because obviously we're all councillors, we're all on the full council as well, so we will take note of the points you have made for future reference. Thank you. No other comments then at all? No, okay. Right, moving on, invited speaker, we don't have members' questions. Does any of our members have any questions? Councillor Strong.
Yes, chairman, may I make a suggestion from experience of previous meetings where we've been going through policy documents? We've got numerous policy documents to go through this evening. I wonder whether it might be worth taking it on a page by page basis rather than for members to be asked for all their comments in one go, so that it's done on a rational basis rather than jumping all over the place as it tends to be and answering other people's questions. So if you do it just page by page for any observations, I think it may be easier to follow and quicker to follow through rather than members jumping from page to page.
Yes, we, that's an interesting, a good idea. Councillor Strong, yes, Peter.
Thank you. I think I think councillor Strong makes a very sensible suggestion. However, can I just underline something? The policy documents that you're reviewing tonight are basically a kind of secondary submission. So this information has been to PLOS before and PLOS were basically saying that additional financial information needs to go to F and G P and then effectively come back. So you've had a preliminary conversation and a preliminary site. This is using the word to kind of second site of this documentation. So hopefully it won't need too much additional time to consider. Thank you.
Yes, I would I would echo that thought, Peter, because we have looked at all this before, yes. All right, any other question, any other members' questions? No. Right, so moving on. Minutes and recommendations of meetings, you have the minutes before you, so can we look at them for accuracy on page one or page six of the pack? Any comments on accuracy? Page seven? Eight? Nine? Right, no comments on accuracy. Any, any? Matters arising, no, yes. Is that next? Yes. Yeah, so right, matters arising. Any matters arising?
Before we move into that, just if I might note the fact, I say the minutes of the council meeting rather than minutes of the committee under matters arising. So perhaps we could amend the, it's a bit later, amend the agenda now, but it does say minutes of council meeting held on the first of October rather than the minutes of the committee.
Yes, good point. Thank you very much for that. I wondered about that myself. Yes, we're just looking at the minutes of the PLOS meeting held on Tuesday, the first of October. Right, matters arising, page, page six. Any? No, page seven. Page eight? Page nine? No. Right, no matters arising. Right, items for consideration. PLOS status report. We have a written report on this sort of current, current PLOS issues. But right, Chief Executive, would you like to comment?
Thank you. So I hope that members find this extremely interesting, so we're going to try and do this in a slightly different way. So the first thing to say, I think, is the status report, the coloured status report that you've got in front of you is repetitive. It is, it is a excerpt from the document that you have on a weekly basis to give you assurance in regard to the range of projects that the council is doing. So bearing in mind that you see this on a regular basis, there's no effectively new news connected to this. So what I'd like to do is for members to note that and to move forward. What we've also tried to do on this occasion and to make the conversation a little bit more rich is that Funda and Harry have put together a short pictorial presentation which gives you a sense about how busy Public Realm is associated with doing the work so that you can visually see this and experience it in a better way. So looking to the chair, if you're happy with this, would you be okay if, if we present that and Harry does a short overview connected to that if members are happy with?
Yes, yes, please, yes.
It's a kind of richer debate. So Funda, would you like to shine that, please?
Just like to draw members' attention to the television, television screen. Here you have an overview of some of the work we've been doing down at the allotments. You'll see. Yeah, it'll come back. Some of the playground work we've been doing. Cemetery, this is Drove Road in particular, which was very, very overgrown. Now you can actually see the, the graves. It's a bowling club, been doing a lot of work there. Play areas, trying to improve them, doing some edging and cleaning of the surfaces, cleaning the equipment. This is Franklin's, done all the edging. We've repacked all these areas now. Some of the repaint we've been doing around the play areas. Some of that's the winter bedding and the planters we've restained. This is the spinny. It's a fabulous improvement to the spinny. Absolutely fantastic. And this is the security ballers we've installed at Stratton Way Cemetery. And that's edging we've been doing at the cemetery also. This is, this is really good work that Public Realm is producing now. And this is the walls that were damaged, the both car parts have been replaced. New signage, new trucks that we have with the high sides. This is all recycled. Yeah, we've installed these, all recycled material there. If we can go again, Funda. So it's business as usual initiatives. This is, this is the apron down at the allotments. And we've put the bug box, bug house there and benches and it's all recycled material. Obviously, my team spent a lot of time down there, a lot of resources there, so we've been, been doing that. There's thousands of pictures I can share with you. I try, I try to keep everybody updated with, but but as you can see, the overview you're getting now is the work that Public Realm do in all, all aspects, business as usual and also projects that we do. Obviously coming up, there's other projects which I'll keep yous update, updated with at the next plot, PLOS meeting, we'll do something similar for the Stratton Way Cemetery project and things like that. We'll, we'll keep you updated in this way. But as you can see, it's a big, big difference in certain areas now. I'm over the moon what's going on in the ground at the moment. And this is what I was talking about, the maintenance on the play equipment. Whereas we don't have to replace it, we just have to maintain it better. And that's what we're doing. That's what, that's where we want to head and that we'll, we'll proceed with that. But the planters are a big, big difference in the planters. These are Sainsbury Planters and Hithere Street and the emblem, emblem one. And that, again, the part, the path there, it's all recycled with filling out we've done there. And this is, you know, again, that saves a lot of costs for, for us as a council because we don't need to dispose of it in skips. So it cuts down the skip usage. And they've been a great addition to the, to Stratton Way Cemetery, the ballers. And you see either side of the ballers, this was another initiative we done. I don't know if a lot of yous have been through the cemetery and seen the baskets that they put the scarbed floors in. They're now hidden within these, you know, and it's really tidied up the frontage. Yeah, it looks really good now, yeah. And all the edging we're doing. So I'll stop there. I think that's.
Funda, would it be possible to send all the members of the committee, in fact, all members, that presentation so that they can take their time and digest it? Is that okay?
Right, thank you, Funda. Okay. So we're not going to have any specific comment on the progress report. One, one comment I would like to make is just on the very last line of the status report where a year ago, members will remember that the committee agreed that we ought to put signage on our assets, as we refer to them, on what were council facilities and properties, to make it clear that they were being run by the Bigglesway Town Council, which is not always clear or perhaps known to the residents of what we, what we are actually doing. But finally, is going to be carried out, I'm informed. Would you like to add a comment on that, Head of Governance?
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Chairman. So briefly, just to add to what Chairman's just been saying on that row, yes, we've just placed an order actually with the, with a winning provider for, let me get this right, it's twenty, it is twenty two signs to be displayed out across all of our recreation grounds, green open spaces, play areas, some other areas as well, which are green essentially across the whole town. So they'll be done in one, in one, well, that'll be done gradually, I've got to say, because Public Realm team, Harry's graciously agreed to kind of carry that work out. So bit by bit we'll get there. And it'll, it'll help to kind of consolidate, if you like, the offer and provide clear instructions at each signpost for that. All under U K S P F, I've got to say that bit.
Yes. Okay, thank you. So does anybody have any comments or questions about, about any of this, about the presentation, about any, anything on the progress report? Peter, would you like to?
Just add two final comments. Number one. You'll recall several months ago, we tried to prioritise key aspects of work. And one of the things that we were, we slightly put aside is the issue of cemetery provision going forward. Now, the current cemetery, based on current demand, will be full in approximately two thousand and forty two. Yep. So my colleague to the right is, is busy working with our partners to try and understand what possibilities there might be connected to future opportunities and how that might connect to future development within Bigglesway and how we might define that. Because effectively at the moment, as we know, for those of you who live here, any green space is effectively built upon. It's very, very difficult to try and find new land. But if we can tie and tag that responsibility on to any future development, yes, then that's the way that we need to try and, try and attract that. The second thing, and I mention it particularly bearing in mind we've got the allotment association here and other allotment holders, is that we're also working with our partners, with C B C, to try and identify additional allotment land, haven't we? So far, limited progress, but you might want to update.
All right, thanks. So, so essentially on the allotment land, well, I should just step back if I may. So on the cemetery land, that's absolutely correct. And in fact, just the row here actually may, may be reinvigorated shortly with, if we've got any information to put into the status report, which already alludes to the purchase of additional cemetery land or some acquisition of it. On the allotment side, certainly we've got a meeting, I think it's on the third of February, with C B C officers to talk through, to walk through the various items of land and also S one O six and other things as well. And this is definitely on that for discussion because we've asked them numerous times before already. So we're going to hold on to accounts on that one.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any comment? Oh, councillor Strong.
Thank you, Chairman. Just with regard to the point about additional allotment land and indeed the cemeteries. Perhaps officers when they're meeting with C B C might suggest that when it comes to the detailed planning applications, because we've got outline planning permissions in place at the moment, that they could possibly ask C B C whether it's possible to put a condition that a certain amount of land is reserved specifically for additional allotments and additional cemetery land, so that it goes into the planning permission rather than just waiting for other landings. Seems to be an opportunity that would be too good to waste, particularly as at least one of the developments I would hope would begin sooner rather than later. We've been waiting for that one for many years now.
Thank you. Because I seem to recall that the land north of Ferson Hall Road, part of their application and presentation of the whole affair included allotments in, on that site. Is that correct? So we need to pick that one up and pursue it. Councillor Foster.
I've just fallen on from this particular item. I just want to thank Harry and his team and Funda actually for the presentation. I think it's really useful to see it in this meeting so we can sort of focus our minds on the work that the Public Realm team are doing. Although we've seen some of the photos before, but actually having it in a presentation, that does allow us to refocus our, our minds on what excellent work has been done. So thank you for that.
Yes, thank you, Harry, for that. Okay. Right, moving on. The next item on the agenda is allotment lettings policy terms and conditions. And as requested, I think it is necessary to point out that we have been through this at least twice, I think, already. And I believe it has been approved by town council even, hasn't it? At least tentatively. Subject, the only thing that was it that was missing and the only reason it's come back is that it had, it didn't have the fees in it, which obviously we have talked about, but they have now been agreed by F and G Finance and General Purposes Committee and by town council. So Head of Governance, do you wish to speak about this then?
Just briefly, if you'd like to introduce the report essentially, just which is a slim report as it is actually, because.
Well, there is, yes, there's a written report here. No doubt councillors have read already, yeah.
Oh, okay, then as brief as I can. Essentially, the main change, well, the, as, as has been repeated before, actually, this has gone through both PLOS chairman and deputy chairman on a couple of occasions. It has been worked through with the B A A, although of course I acknowledge the remarks made as well this evening by the representatives. It's, from our perspective, I suppose, aside from the financial things which have been touched on already, we have been able to agree quite, quite a lot of things. Actually, I'm quite delighted about that with B A A and others as well. And I should stress actually that the meetings have been open to individual plot holders to attend as well, you know, for quite some time now, at their own choice. The main changes, I think, that this, that have come through this policy relate essentially to clarification of the percentage of the actual area of the plot, which should be set aside towards cultivation as opposed to left fallow essentially. And also an increase obviously in the plot deposit amount, which I don't think it's unfair to say that, I think the town council were looking for a higher amount. Maybe Harry was heard more of that in due course on this, but actually we've settled on an amount which seems about satisfactory. And that's went through F and G P. I'll pause there. The deposit.
Yeah, I'd just like to elaborate a bit on the, the deposit. Obviously, it was, it was fifty pounds previous. When a, when a plot is relinquished, there's lots of items left within that plot, whether it's a shed, a greenhouse, polytunnel, you name it. And before it can be reallocated, you know, the previous tenant has got to clear it. If they don't want to do it, it's left to Public Realm to clear that plot and tidy it up. Now, the cost of skips are two hundred and five pounds and sometimes the amount of materials coming off one plot of full a skip, yeah? So I think it's a fair, a fair costing that we've put on that for the deposit. And we compromised on that a lot because we did set it, we'd go for one hundred and fifty pounds and we agreed with the B A A, a hundred pounds is a fair enough figure to go with. And that's what we went as regards to the deposit because of what we have to do to clear a plot.
Right, okay, Peter.
I just wanted to, to reiterate that in our conversations with the allotment association, the first logical step when you've got a redundant plot is to offer those materials to anybody else who happens to be there and sensibly to do that, yeah. So it's only effectively what's left is then a cost to the council to make sure that we then go a nice tidy plot for the new allotment holder to take over. Thank you.
Right, anyway, councillor Foster.
I'm just going to make the point at the beginning, I understand why the allotment fees are being added in to the document. But given that the allotment fees have been added into the document, we have a review policy that says we're going to next review it in January twenty eighth, which doesn't seem to link favorably with if we wanted to review the fees. So I'd just be minded for the fact that I understand that if, if we are, if annually we review the fees and keep them the same, there's no amendments. But if not, there may be a requirement to amend the policy, albeit we could just rubber stamp exactly what's on there. But we just need to be mindful of that, that point, please.
I think, I think it's legit, it would be legitimate to say, issue a new document, if you like, with new fees in it, with no changes and say, we're not going to change any of the wordings because it's not due till January twenty eighth.
If I might, may I come back? I understand the, the policy, but if that's, that's the case, are all other policies where there are charges, do charges apply in the policy? And that, that's my point. Is there a requirement to have fees and charges in a policy document as a rule? Is this something we're specifically doing for the, for the allotment policy? And that's my.
Okay, well, that's a very good point and maybe that's something we can, let's not get too deeply into that this evening because we do want to get home before midnight. So let's try and consider that for the future, that it might make sense to take the fees out of this document altogether and have them as a separate resolution, separate document for fees and charges. Peter?
So I think councillor Foster makes an interesting observation. So I think the intention of, of officers were, there are certain policies where there are snippets of financial information that change on a yearly basis. When we say review, we mean review the policy, the policy, you know, the twenty, thirty, forty pages of individual policy. When members make a determination about fees and, and charges per year, that effectively is an insert that then goes into the policy. But you have two choices. You either have a policy that doesn't have financial information and you exclude it, or you have a policy that's reviewed as a policy excluding the financial information. But either is acceptable.
Yeah, let's not get too deeply into this, please, because, you know, we've been through this so many times. Sorry, councillor Foster, did you have something?
Going to make a point.
You've made the point.
So we can't have it both ways. It's got to be one or the other. In which case, can I ask that if we've got a jet, we need to then make sure the policy is reviewed and there's a formal review of the policy to reflect the change in fees if there are any at the next point. The next, not the next meeting, but the applicable, next applicable meeting after we've dealt with the charges.
Right. Councillor Jones.
Sorry, thank you. I wonder if the reason that that's in there and the clerk may want to come back on this is that there was originally the idea of having a percentage, which therefore would not need to be reviewed until twenty eight because that would have been a consistent way forward, which makes me think, is there something else that needs to be discussed? But I appreciate this has come back a couple of times, but I'm just putting that out there. The other question I have is, just for my own curiosity, where does it lay out our responsibilities as the freeholders to be able to, the upkeep that we do for, because it lists everything for the tenants and what we expect from them, but it doesn't say specifically in the policy what we do. And I know that Harry and the team does a lot, but do we list it anywhere? And the third question is just based on what Harry was referring to and clearing out old plots. And I can fully appreciate the amount of work that goes into that. Are we invoicing for that from now onwards for the costs that we're incurring for that?
I believe we do, if we incur more than a hundred pound cost, we would send them, we do invoice for it, don't we? Harry? Or not?
No, we don't.
No, we don't. Okay.
But it's in the policy that we will.
Well, maybe it is, but.
No, we don't. That was the, the agreement was a hundred pound deposit and I totally agree with councillor Jones. And I totally agree with councillor Jones. At the end of the day, that's only, that's not the labour costs that's involved for public realm to go there as well. If I were to add that on, the deposit would be a lot more.
But it's in the policy. So if we are asking tenants, then we should be doing the same.
Yeah.
Shall I answer the question? Is that all right?
Yes, please do.
Okay. I agree with you. So going forward within this new policy, if there's a situation where there's excessive cost associated with something making good, then the council should sensitively raise an invoice and talk to the people and make them aware of that going forward. In the past, in previous practices, it tended to absorb these things and do its best for the allotment holders. But where there's excessive costs, you need to be conscious of this.
Yes.
But then does it list out? Sorry.
Can Harry answer that question? Harry, just wanted to do it.
Sorry, what was the point you're making now? Councillor.
As in the schedule of work that the public realm carry out.
Well, yeah, because in the policy, it's just very heavily weighted about our expectations of tenants, which I completely get. But then just to show the balance of what we do, what we will do so that as we hold people to account, if they leave greenhouse or something, they should be able to hold us to account equally as well.
Yeah, well, perhaps that's something we can think about as a future. Head of governance, do you have some comment on that then?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So just essentially the answer is whilst I accept obviously that there isn't a sort of yin and yang approach to this document, which provides complete and utter harmony all the way through it in terms of what we, you know, it seems a lot of the one sided, I think that's what councillor Jones is getting at. We do have an operational annual, call it order improvement plan, which we go through primarily with the BAA on a monthly cycle. It's a red amber green document. It's available for anyone to request if they need to, other than maybe some ultra sensitive items in there, whatever. But essentially, year on year, we show improvement on that. So that's the way we deal with it in an operational sense. There might be some space to, you know, carve some extra space into this kind of document at a future point. I think in terms of, you know, what the kind of contracts is, if you like, you know, between the two parties essentially are. One other point, if I may, in terms of the twenty eight, twenty twenty eight review and kind of why has it been left that long? My interpretation is essentially, as we're aware, is that all our policies have a two to three to even four year review cycle, depending on what they are. And going back to councillor Foster's points as well and observations on this, most of the policies do not have fees or anything relating to numbers essentially incorporated in them. We're taking, I might be wrong on this, we'll have to double check, but on the allotments case, we've taken, I think, three documents and pushed them and blended them into two, right? If that makes sense in terms of getting a synergy on this, and that's why some of the fees might still be in here. But for example, on a later agenda item for perials or something, that refers to appendices for fees. So we can adopt one approach which would make sense absolutely throughout, completely acceptable.
Yeah, I think these are things to consider for the future. Yeah, okay. Councillor Skilton.
Thank you. I've got a couple of points sort of generally, and then I would hope to come back at some point if we go through this page by page with some detail in the terms and conditions. First of all, can I ask councillor Thomas to clarify whether he did declare a non pecuniary interest or not, as I believe he has previously declared a non pecuniary interest, and I'd like to know if something's changed.
I'm quite happy to declare pecuniary interest, a non pecuniary interest.
Okay, thank you. The second part really is sort of this, I keep saying we've seen this document, and I don't think PLOS has had this. Because on the first of October, I made the point that it would have been nice to have had a copy of the document at PLOS. And I've seen this in advance this meeting, but only because I'm a plot holder, not because I'm a member of this committee. And also, I just think it's worth pointing out that we've called this allotment policy and terms and conditions. They're two separate things. And I think actually we need to, you know, look at, you know, whether we have policies and terms and conditions and, you know, I think that can lead to confusion because that's kind of the point that councillor Jones made about roles and responsibilities.
Well, just to pick up that point, I mean, as Karim was saying, we had, this is a merger of documents, we used to have terms and conditions and policy as two separate documents. And the plot holder signed the terms and conditions. And then we had our council policy, which was in addition to that. We decided to put the two together rightly or wrongly, but that's the decision that was made. In terms of whether it was, I am certain that this has been to PLOS before, hasn't it? This policy document. Please, Karim, yes.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. So my recollection, without going through and finding any end, is that when we were assessing the approach to be used for all policy reviews in the round, at a certain point, we elected, if you like, on that, on the policy review basis, to go into the chairs and vice chairs of each committee as a kind of working arrangement, because actually there was a quite a large number of council, of, sorry, policies that had, shall we say, fallen, the review had expired for each, yeah? So in order to catch up, that's the approach we used. I'll stop there.
This was on the agenda of the last. And in fact, it should be in the minutes, actually, if anybody cares to look, because it was, it was on the agenda of the last, I'm sure of that. Anyway.
Can we just be clear about this? So I think there's a question there which we need to properly answer as officers. So I think there's a note to be taken by officers to respond to councillor Skilton and be specific about which committees this document has and hasn't been through. So there's absolute clarity associated with this. We can take that action away just to so that we can then facilitate an ongoing conversation. That would be helpful, I think, if that's okay.
Yeah, it is in the minutes, ten B.
It wasn't attached as an appendix to that agenda, I'm sure of it, because I asked in that meeting, it would have been Oh, there you go. Okay. Yeah, yeah. And sorry, I'm going to, just if I can make another point. I don't think this is a valuable use of our time evaluating policies page by page in committee meetings. I don't know why these aren't sent out, giving councillors the opportunity to do track changes or a shared document or some technological advancement which is available and which most of us, lots of us use in our day to day jobs about reviewing documents and having comments and things, which we've done previously, but the meeting clerk who's normally here helped us facilitate that. I seem to remember on a document quite recently, I can't remember what document it was, but I feel sort of, you know.
Yeah, but haven't we done that? Haven't we done that?
No, I don't think we have.
Yes, please do.
Okay. So councillor Skilton makes a valid point. So for some more complex policies that the council has reflected upon, for instance, standing orders, there was an opportunity to place the information on SharePoint and to capture suggested amendments going forward. There is not an absolute perfect solution to this. Some of our members prefer to work off hard copies and to look at, and actually specifically members asked us to put a track changes document forward, hard copy, and a complete document forward hard copy. Now, if we were working in a principal authority, then certainly the habit tends to move towards SharePoint and be to be a collective document working. But we don't have an absolutely clean approach for this particular town council. So it's a kind of best fit.
Okay, anyway, if we can, these points are noted and let's take them into account for the future. But this is where we are at the present time. This is what we have. So are we going to go through this page by page now then? Right, page one fifteen.
Are we going to attract tracked changes or the clean?
Well, they should be the same, aren't they?
Well, they're different page numbers. So I suggest the clean one.
Right, okay, we'll do that. Right, so that makes it page twenty nine. Yes, anybody, any comments on page twenty nine? No, right. Page thirty, Colin. No, thirty one. Right, right, the first page proper, thirty two. Any comments? No, thirty three. I think you were first, councillor Allbut.
Thank you. So in the, in the policy number one. So the second sentence there about a tenant permanently moving out of the parish boundary, that looks to me like it's repeated in the paragraph that comes after that. Because that also says once a tenant moves out of the parish boundary. So I think perhaps that first, that the second sentence in that policy can be removed.
Yeah, I thought we, I seem to remember we came across that before. Yes, right.
Okay. And I've got some more comments on that particular policy. So in the third paragraph there, the sentence I just mentioned, it starts once a tenant, but that seems to imply that all tenants are going to move. So I think there should be an if rather than a once. And finally, the last sentence in that paragraph seems to conflict to me with the second sentence in that paragraph, in that they both talk about tenants moving out of the parish boundary. But one suggests that the tenancy is automatically terminated and the other one suggests giving twelve months' notice. That might be that that's meant for tenants that have already moved out. I'm not sure. But to me, those two conflict. I'm not quite sure what we should do about it.
I think it's giving them, anyway, let's not, giving them notice, but but it's not, anyway.
Yeah, so I would suggest that the last sentence is removed and the second sentence in that paragraph, which suggests that if they move, the tenancy agreement is automatically terminated.
All right.
I don't know how other members feel.
Any further comments on this page?
Not on this page.
Right, councillor Strong. Yes, very much on the same points as councillor Allbut. It says tenancies will automatically terminate in the particular paragraph, which I think means it would end on the spot. Now, I'm not sure that's necessarily fair to an allotment holder who has been cultivating and moves out in, say, July. What happens to their crop? Who gets that? The tenancy is for a year, so I think it should automatically terminate at the end of the year of their agreement. I think that's only fair and reasonable to the allotment holder so that they actually get the opportunity to deal with it because otherwise we'll have a situation of Harry and his staff having to go in and clear up the allotment. And at that stage, then claiming the deposit back because they've had to go in and do it when the allotment holder hasn't had the opportunity. So I think it would be, will automatically terminate at the end of that current agreement would actually make more sense there. And again, the council will provide twelve months' notice for tenants who live outside the parish boundary to relinquish their tenancy. So I think that would probably apply to existing tenants at the time that this tenancy applied. And then again, I would have said that it would be appropriate to finish it at the end of the year, which I think would be the thirty first of August, if I've understood the document correctly. So there are little bits of tidying up, and I'm not sure. Again, this is the difficulty with, where some members have had an opportunity to look through it and gone through it in detail. And we haven't had the necessary, the opportunity to go back, as councillor Skilton was mentioning earlier. But there are these ambiguities in that particular clause at the moment, and perhaps officers would like to comment. If we take the last sentence out, I think in practice, you would give them to the end of the growing season, wouldn't you, to leave? Yes. It's just his officer discretion. Perhaps if it's in the policy, it should be clear, not ambiguous. Councillor Johnson.
Yeah, I think actually councillor North, you said it quite nicely there, the end of the growing season. I'm mindful of what we've heard earlier in the evening about allotments overgrowing when left unkept. And depending upon, I suppose, when somebody leaves, if they are left till the end of the year, as councillor Strong suggests, it could potentially negatively impact other people. So maybe your translation of end of the growing season would be a suitable.
Yeah, well, if we put it in the middle, in the middle of that paragraph, it says the garden will automatically terminate. If you add in the words at the end of the growing season or at the end of the annual rental period or something like that, that would clarify, wouldn't it? Any other comments on this page?
That doesn't clarify it for me. We've got to be one, we've got to get some clear wording so that the clerk can actually be called. What are we deciding to do? So let's get some clear wording so that we're recording something correctly, one or the other. What are we doing?
I move that we add the words after automatically terminate at the end of the current licence agreement. Yes, yes. Right, that's all. Right, any other comments on this? Right, page thirty four. Councillor Skilton.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just on the table there with the hundred pound additional charges may apply if plots are left in a substandard state. That's not very clear. And I take that to mean, especially given the conversation it had earlier where the town clerk intimated we may invoice people if they leave a plot in a state even worse than what the hundred pound would cover. I think if that is the case, that needs to be very, very clear in the terms and conditions. And I would suggest that if we are going to do that, then a deposit is unnecessary anyway. We just invoice people the cost of, and they agree to that if they sign terms and conditions. I don't think you can have both. I don't think you can have a deposit and then also invoice people afterwards because I don't think you've got any legal recourse to enforce that money. So we could just potentially be creating a debt for ourselves by issuing an invoice we'll never get paid for.
Yeah, but if you've got a deposit, at least you know you're going to get at least that in payment, whereas if you issue an invoice, you know.
Well, don't even.
But anyway.
One or the other.
Yes, would you like to comment on that, Harry?
That's just exactly what I was going to say. If you take a deposit when they take over the plot, yeah? You've got the money, the money's there, it's there to recoup. If we invoice at the end of tenancy, the chances of getting money is going to be very, very difficult. So I think the deposit's the best way forward.
I think a point I would make is that where it says additional charges, that should be on a separate line.
Well, that needs to come out. If we're not going to do it, if we're not going to invoice people, which is now being suggested we won't, then that line needs to come out. It's a hundred pound deposit. That's it. Or if we are going to do additional charges, then it needs to be clear and that needs to be agreed by the tenancy holders. And it'd be something I consider my position as a plot holder, if I was subject to a potentially unlimited fine for leaving a plot in a way the council deems unfit.
Well, you always have the option not to sign the agreement, Andy, yeah. Please do.
So members set the policies and strategy of the council. If the members present take a vote and come to a judgment that the invoice element should come out of the policy, it comes out of the policy. So we need to, you know, members need to listen to that debate and to determine what is the best and the most efficient way forward. So perhaps we can suggest that that debate come to give off some guidance about that.
Or can I move that we remove the additional charges section from these terms and conditions?
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll ask a question first.
Yes, please do.
Have you ever invoiced before and actually successfully got the money back? Yes, we have. So if you go back, I think it was probably three years, nearly three years, we had one particular gentleman, which was which was a challenge. And in that particular instance, the work was very much disproportionate. But we do not, as councillor Skilton says, this is not something that happens on a regular basis. It's very, very rare.
Quick.
Yes. Sorry, just briefly, on this point, actually, in terms of deposits and state condition of plots, essentially, we're looking at a situation of less than half a dozen occasions a year, maybe one or two or three at the most in terms of where officers have, they retain according to this as well, terms and conditions, a monitoring obligation, but also an executive decision, essentially, to deem based on photographic evidence and correspondence with plot holders on what is actually an acceptable state or not, based on, again, like I say, in terms of what is deemed to be legally reasonable, if you like, as well. So on this, to say additional charges may apply if plots are left. I mean, it's not easy to provide clarity because it depends on the condition of the site, how much stuff is left on there, even after it's shared out, if you like, to other, or recycled to other plot holders, etc. It's actually then comes to one or more skips and however many hours are required of labour to clear those plots, I think.
Yeah, I mean, okay, let's just, councillor Skilton, can you repeat your proposal? Your proposed amendment, yeah, please.
That we do not include the additional charges may apply if plots left in a substandard state line in the terms and conditions.
Right. Is there a second for that motion?
Question. I'm not seconding it, I'm afraid, councillor Skilton. Number one, if you declare a non pecuniary interest, can you put forward motions? Because, okay, thank you very much. And then the other question was if, well, let's see if it's seconded because I have a
Well, I think councillor Skilton declared a pecuniary interest in doing this.
I think non pecuniary, but because the fees are in here, perhaps it is a pecuniary interest. So it means I have to leave.
Is he permitted to?
Shall I answer your question?
Yes, please.
Yes, please do.
Okay. Non pecuniary, yes. Pecuniary, no.
Right. Well, let's assume it's not pecuniary. Right. Is there a second for the? Is there a is there a second for the motion? No, right. Are you seconding?
No, I've got some observations to make on the particular.
Well, wait a bit, just so, all right, but. So the motion has been put forward, an amendment. There's no second, therefore it's lost. Right, councillor Strawn, a new point.
Yeah, effectively councillor Skilton is quite right. I think he's saying the hundred pounds should be separated from the additional charges. But I think there is possibly a lack of definition of when the deposit is actually forfeited and what conditions there are in there. And then if you've got the additional charges, which I can remember the case that the clerks mentioned, where it was a quite extreme example. And I think in those cases where and I think councillor Skilton would probably accept this, that where somebody has abused, and this wasn't abuse, that they should be charged. It may be that there should be some clarification as when those charges may apply because on a general basis, I think raising an invoice is probably impractical. But in that particular case, there was an abuse, I think, of the the situation.
Okay, well, that's noted for the future. Right. Page thirty five.
Sorry.
Oh, further points on page thirty four.
I don't think it is, with all due respect, a point for the future. I think it's important that we tie it down now or at least give officers the right to go off and look at it. Otherwise, all we're doing is pushing things under the carpet instead of addressing them. And I think if we listen to councillor Straw's point about some sort of definition, and I appreciate that that's probably almost impossible in this situation because every situation will be different, but maybe there's some examples we could put in there, what would constitute a substandard state, which would be a middle ground potentially, because it's never going to be a definitive answer per plot.
Well, I think you need to make the make the make those make the proposal and if you're proposing.
So then I propose that we would put in some examples of what would be considered a substandard state.
Well, I think we need the exact wording.
Something to councillor Jones. So when council and PLOS have had this conversation over the years, over the last four years, the advice from members was that the head of public realm is a professional, a horticultural professional. They would come to a considered view based on the evidence that we have, and we take pictures, by the way, as well. So it's not just a perception. And they then have their professional judgment that comes to bear. If something is beyond what's considered reasonable within these figures, and it can be evidenced properly and the conversation can be had with the allotment holder, then in those particular circumstances, using their professional judgment, their professional horticultural judgment, and in those instances, things are escalated. But as as Mr Hussani was saying, these are very, very rare events. This happened once in the last four and a half years, and that was in the national press. It's extremely rare. Very rare.
That sounds like a very acceptable alternative if other members are linked with it. Thank you.
Are you, do you still wish to make an amendment to the wording?
Yes, I think if that if the wording that the clerks use, I would propose that we would add that in and hopefully that would be able to tie everything up.
Right, what is that wording then, Peter, that's to be added? Now, we need the exact words, don't we?
So why don't we use something along the lines of if an assessment will take place by the head of public realm? And if in their professional view, and as evidenced, any work, any commensurate work is deemed excessive, and in only in those circumstances can an invoice be raised.
Right, is there a second for that?
I'll happily move what the clerk said.
All those in favour, please. Against. Right, so that's carried. Those words are added then, right. Councillors.
Some very minor points on page thirty four. So the 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 top of the page says even if they chooses, I think it should be choose. And in the the third paragraph on the page, it it talks about production of formal documents, i.e. driving licence, council tax. That shouldn't be i, it should be either e.g. or for example, preferably for example.
Where was that, sorry?
The 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 third paragraph on the page.
E.G. instead of i.e.
Yeah, or well, it'd be nicer if you use for example or use English.
Yeah, you're right, for example. Right, any other comments on page thirty four? Councillor Skilton.
It's not actually on page thirty four. I I move that we ask officers to write to members of this committee with a version of this and ask for their comments. I don't think we can sit here and do this page by page if we're looking at typos and things like that, and and that this committee gives no more consideration to this document tonight.
Well, we need to take all those in councillor Skilton's put forward the motion that we defer further consideration of this document and the officers put out a a version for comment on SharePoint or or some of the, yes?
I think I think that's an interesting approach. Thank you. If you're going to use it for one policy, then perhaps you might want to use it for the other policies that you're considering this evening as an alternative, more modern approach.
I'd be very happy with that.
That's for you to make a judgment upon. Harry?
Well, let's come back to this. We're talking about allotments.
Because we've discussed these policies at numerous meetings, the trial changes.
We've been through this document many times, and yes. And it surprises me that some of these people are pointing out, because I'm sure, I'm sure some of these points people are making have been raised before. I know, yes, okay. Right, anyway, we have a proposal with a second, all those in, which is to defer further consideration of this subject to it being circulated to all members with comment. All those in favour? One, two, three, four, five. Against. None, right, that is carried. All right. Let's move on then, right. The next item then is, where are we? Burial and memorial regulations. Please do, Peter.
Okay, yes. In in the spirit of trying to move the meeting along and for an efficient use of officers and members' time, if you've determined this in one particular policy, would you like to extend this logic to the other policies that you're considering this evening? Or would you like to do them in detail?
Thank you. What do people think? I mean, do you want to defer this and put it out for, because I mean, it's going to have to come back to the meeting at some point anyway. And we're going to have to go through it page by page. Well, yes, but, well.
Chairman, we've got members.
Yes, we're. Yes. Let me just make sure we're keeping on track with this. Yes, so councillor Albin, we should make a comment, councillor Albin.
We we have been through this before, and the the only changes are the the fees, I believe. But but the actual policy itself has been through this committee before, as has the next one. The 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 previous one hadn't.
All right, so you. Right, so there is no proposal before the committee. Right, so what do we, do we want to go through this page by page then? Do people want to do that or just say, okay, so the proposal is, who's going to? There is a report here. The PLOS and recommendation that we adopt the regulations as as presented and review again in January twenty twenty eight. Is somebody going to propose the acceptance of this, councillor Albin? Is there a second for that motion? Yes. All those in favour? Unanimous, I think, almost. Right. So moving on, the next item is football pitch booking policy terms and conditions. And I believe in his what's that? In his comments, we heard that this was the same.
Yep.
Fact, basically. Where are we? So do we have a proposal that we accept this this policy document as presented?
Chairman, I'm happy with the process.
Seconded, right. So we're not going to go through it line by line. Do you have a comment, councillor Strawn?
I I do, chairman. I just didn't understand on page two of, on page fifty seven overall, a hundred times sixty yards with posts covering or including. I didn't understand what the covering or including meaning means. I'm might, should may have missed out on a previous occasion, but otherwise that was the only comment.
I don't seem to have that with me, anyway, but. Chairman. All right, yes, sorry, fifty seven, right. Harry, do you have a comment on that?
My 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 observation, chairman, is that it it seems to cover the fact that a hundred by sixty is the three pitches in total. Given the forty by thirty, forty by thirty entertaining pitch. So that's where the including comes from, is my interpretation.
Yeah, what is it, what is it, what is there at Stant, Stantley Recreation Ground? We have one full size football pitch and it incorporates two smaller ones that run across. So that's basically what that means.
All right, so, yeah, all right. So they're all on the same area. Yeah, okay. Any other comments on this then? So is anybody, is somebody going to propose that this is accepted or has we done that already? And has it been seconded? Yes, right. All those in favour, please show. Thank you very much. I think that's unanimous as well. Right, so those two are agreed. Right, E. Drover Road Tennis Courts update. Head of Governance, please.
Thank you, Mr Chairman. So this report simply is an update report following the capital projects report that came to Full Town Council, I think in October of last year for capital projects for all the various range of possibilities going forward. And then which was subsequently incorporated into town council members deliberations and and then resolution regarding the precept for next financial year. So this report takes out the tennis development in terms of tennis courts resurfacing specifically, which there's a, at the moment, they are in 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 a in a condition which is health and safety compliant, shall we say, but they're kind of fast degrading based on the report which we've had just, I think, probably about a year ago now, actually, which is still very much valid because it's quite in depth and quite specialist. It also looks at the potential option for floodlighting the pitches, as has been discussed and raised with members before. Total amount essentially is indicative values for twenty twenty four, twenty five. So that's based on on kind of now figures and then would have to have indexation applied and obviously reprocurement as such in future at about a hundred and eighty four thousand pounds. Now, this report is not suggesting that we go ahead with any expenditure because clearly that was out with the the initial precept deliberations. However, there are two areas which the report recommends going ahead with. Let us fast forward to the recommendations, which is, one is to from April twenty twenty five to submit a planning application to CBC regarding floodlighting, the possibility or otherwise of those. And the second one is during the next financial year for officers to explore and source various points of either S one oh six funding, as has been mentioned earlier this evening, or external funding via the kind of major organisations to see whether there is an opportunity when the window would arise to make an application and then consider that obviously in line with reporting to members. That's essentially it.
Okay, thank you, Peter. Do you have some comments?
Could I just reinforce something that Corinne's just been saying? So when members have deliberated the capital funding issues associated with the council, and there's been two detailed papers which have been co-authored by the Chair of PLOS, Chair of FNGP and Chair of Town Centre Management Committee. And when the members have looked at the budget setting proposals and have recently agreed the precept, they were conscious that this is an exciting opportunity, but currently the council doesn't have a sufficient budget to enable it to invest or to carry forward any PWLB borrowing at the present time. So it determined not to move forward associated with this. However, what it did say in those capital papers was that we should at least begin to try to progress the project as best we can. So you remember that we reached out to the community to try and gauge interest and understanding about this, that we should at least for the time being, submit a planning application around potential floodlighting if the project were to become a reality. And they're conscious of what we've just been saying. This is a leisure facility. It is the responsibility also of the principal authority, and that we should actively seek funding from the principal authority to enable this project to come to fruition in perhaps a year or eighteen months from now. So this is kind of a holding position, but moving the issue forward slightly. That's the sense of the solution. Thank you.
Fine, thank you, Peter. Does anybody have any comments or questions on this matter? Councillor Strawn?
Yes, I think it makes sense to move it forward as there's nominal costs effectively in the current financial year. But as far as the recommendation goes, I think where it says officers discuss section one oh six funding options with CBC and other funding options with them as CBC is the leisure authority and to explore external sports funding. So I think that in terms of the recommendations put forward, if we just added in that point and highlighted the fact that it is shown that it is the responsibility of CBC in part as the leisure authority, I think that is actually with respect to the recommendation is a better way of actually portraying it as a minute and when it goes to CBC.
Thank you, councillor Strawn. Any other comments from anybody on this? Right, we have two recommenders. Councillor Albin?
If councillor Straw is proposing that, then I will happily second that.
All those in favour, please indicate. Thank you. Against? No, right, that's carried. Right, moving on, section ten. Items for information, Stratton Way Cemetery. A written report from the Public Realm Manager and the Head of Governance and Strategic Partnerships. Would you like to comment on this? Please, over to you, Head of Public Realm Manager.
Yeah. Good evening again, members. A bit of positive news here. The project for Stratton Way Cemetery has been going on for a bit of time now. We're we're actually going to achieve a big part of phase one. As you can see in the report, you know, it's the, we've discussed it at various meetings. It was decided that we we create a working group, which we've done, and it's been successful and guided the best way forward for phase one. And we applied for two grant funding applications, the Langford Wind Farm one and the CBC tree and hedge plant and skip, and both were successful to a certain extent. And we achieved most of what was required for phase one. There's a few items that we'll need to put onto phase two. But we'll cover that in the the weeks and months ahead. At the moment, on that subject there, all the bins and benches are ordered. There are sixty eight week lead time on them. So obviously when they come, they'll be delivered to the to the depot. All the plant material has been ordered. And that's coming first week in March. Now, the projected finish time for the project will be thirty first of March, hopefully all completed then for phase one. And then we'll look at progressing phase two and the grant funding process if we want to to follow. And we'll do that through, obviously, the working group and the PLOS committee as well, so. Also, as part of that, we've contacted Grand Union Property and Management on many occasions regarding the area to the rear of Stratton Way Recreation Ground. And I don't know if a lot of yous are familiar with that area, but it's a bit of wasteland at the moment. And we've made inquiries about taking that on. And they're very, they're very slow, to say the least, to coming back. They have responded a few times. Corinne will be able to tell you a bit more about that. But obviously, I just want to give you a wee bit more on the cemetery project. So this week, we're going to start preparation works in there for planting. We will concentrate firstly on the hedge, the hedge rows that we need to to plant. And then obviously we'll move on to the the tree plan. And the plants will be ordered and will be delivered as and when we require them and ready for them. I've made areas available to put the plants in when we take delivery to keep them, keep them moist and keep them in a good environment. So to allow for any time delays with the weather or whatever. So they'll be shut in, as I call it. I don't know if you've ever heard that term. But they'll be shut in to maintain their their root, their root systems and their health. So so that's where we're at with that. And as you've seen as well, the security aspects have been added to the cemetery, which has made a vast, vast difference. the cemetery, which has made a vast, vast difference. Um, the new bollards are in place and the other items that we've added to stop vehicles getting around. Um, so we're moving, we're moving on with the phases. Uh, phase two, as lots say, we've got the roundabouts to look at, we've got, we've got the frontis to look at. Um, there's a children's area, which is going to be a fantastic addition to the cemetery. Uh, it'd be a nice quiet spot for parents to go and uh, you know, just have quiet moments and things. And I think it's a great addition. And hopefully we can achieve all the funding to to achieve every aspect of phase two, and then phase these are way bit down the road, but um if we get phases one and two done, um, you know, we're on, we're on a good track, yeah.
Peter, do you have something to add to that?
Briefly, just to um cement what um what Harry has been saying. I think this is a really, really good example about how effective the working group has been to try and inform a project. And I I think a thank you goes out to councillor Knight for chairing that working group. Um. It's nicely phased here, so it's nicely clean. There's lots of specifications. It's nicely externally funded, which is, which is also a good thing for the council and the council's precept. Um, I've been attending some of the meetings as well, and I know that Karim and Harry have, as is earnest. So it's just been a really good professional, well managed exercise which we can learn from going forward with other projects as well as. But we do need to keep it timely and keep it phased. So phase one is going in, it's being implemented. Uh, and I think Harry's public realm team are doing an excellent job associated with that. So a big thank you goes out to the, thank you.
Right, does anybody have any comments or questions? Councillor Strawn?
Chairman, I welcome the progress. I think this is really encouraging and positive. But I did struggle to understand the mathematics set out in paragraph one because I noticed we've got twenty four thousand from the Langford Wind Farm, and then CBC has confirmed seven thousand, three hundred pounds, etc. So I'm not really sure how this funding is working. It's it's not clear to me. So does the wind farm money cover off the remaining phases or how does that work? It's just not clear. It may be something that could be circulated after the meeting as as an explanation, if that would be easier to members of the committee so they can understand it.
Yeah, I can give you a clarifying. We applied for twenty four thousand for the Langford Wind Farm grant uh application, and we were successful in achieving seven thousand, three hundred. And that pays for the cost of the the bins and the heritage benches and the appendices there. Um, and then obviously we applied, we applied for, I think it was fifteen thousand from the CBC tree and hedge planting uh grant application, and we were, we achieved seven thousand, two hundred and fifty four pounds. Now, you see the difference there? Because there was two applications in one for that. Um, there was a Fairfield Road hedge planting that is uh that is that is good ahead as well. We're doing that as another little project.
So so just to clarify, it sounds as though we didn't, weren't successful for the full twenty four thousand pounds, which is what I was reading into the um.
Yeah, it's just the wording, which I think is not entirely.
Could I pass a comment for the Chair of FNGP? This was an interesting learning experience. Because what we're not aware of, and we wouldn't do because it's not public knowledge, is that when you make application to these um funding streams, they talk to each other. And there is CBC sitting on top of these conversations. So when you make these applications, they're thoughtful that actually what you've also done is you've asked money from another side of the organisation. Thus, the monies that they give out, they consider them to be vaguely proportionate. Do you understand what I mean?
I I understand, but I just, perhaps a future reference, the report could be a li- a little bit clearer on what was successful and where it's come from, because I read the report and thought we'd got twenty four thousand pounds from the Langford Wind Farm.
Right, and if councillor Foster?
I I just want to echo this Peter's comments around the fact that it that the fact that we've got the funding, um so this is essentially externally funded. Uh, we're still able to progress sort of the broad ambition, uh certainly at the first, in the first phase one. So the fact that we're able to get the bins done and some of the planting done is a real step forward. And and that will make a big difference uh in the coming years. And obviously, when we start looking at phase two and phase three, that's also going to be uh, but if we're able to secure additional funding, grant funding or whatever, section one O six, again, it's not a burden on the taxpayer as such. Uh, and it just means that we're still able to enhance the provision up the stramway. So I think it's a, it's a good job. Well done so far.
Thank you. Any other comments?
One final comment. So members will be aware from the precept conversation if we remember some figures. So our officers have put bids in for over four hundred thousand pounds worth of grants this year. That council has never, ever done that and has been successful in a hundred and seventy five thousand of additional monies coming into the council. Officers will continue that good work, and I hope that we run and we can move towards significantly higher figures that will then um act to nullify any potential increases going forward for the precept. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, now, is someone going to propose acceptance of the recommendation? Seconded? All those in favour? Against? None, right, unanimous. The recommendation is accepted. Right, moving on. We're now on item eleven, public open session. Would any member of the public wish to make any further comments, questions? Anybody online, Fonda? No? Okay, well, that means we are now coming up to exempt items and we can end the the public. Yes. All those in favour of moving into exempt session, please indicate. Against? None, it is unanimous. So we finish the.